Well, good evening, everyone. It's close to seven o'clock, so we are going to start. Welcome to the Casco Township Planning and Committee meeting on December 5th. Happy holidays to all of you and your families. We will start off by a pledge of allegiance to the flag. Jim, would you lead us, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could, before we start, folks, could we have a moment of silence for all of our troops around the world who will probably not be spending time with their families, but we certainly want them in our prayers and thoughts. So if you don't mind. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate that. We will continue with the approval of our minutes from our last meeting, October 18th. Are there any additions and/or corrections to the minutes? If not, we need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for October 18th, 2022.
Thanks, Jim. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Gina, thank you. A second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, we can have a motion. Thank you, Jim. Is there a second to that motion? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Carry. Any communications that we need to go through? Steve?
No.
Right now? Okay. We will go to number six. That is discussion from the floor. And this is where we hear from our Casco residents concerning local issues that they may have or want to discuss with the planning commission. So if that is the case, please raise your hand, and we will recognize you and try and help. Yes, sir?
Sure, Gibson. And I've noticed that the gypsy moth population is still on our roof. St. Clair County Department, if they come out and give me the count next year.
That is a very good question, sir. We will find out, and we will have our folks get back with you on that.
The spray that they did this year helped out tremendously.
Good.
But part of the requirements, they stay about 150 feet off the property line. And when I checked along the property line, what section is where they stayed away, they're all down the trees. So the area they did spray, it didn't spray, it's still there. So if we don't keep our finger on it, it's going to get back like it was.
And what location was that again, please?
Between St. Clair Highway and Division on Church Road. Last year, I had over five, six acres completely stripped.
Okay.
This year, it did the job.
Great. We'll pass that on, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We will go into our public hearing, and then assuming that's just why everybody is here, this is the thing. Steve, could you give us a little lead in to...
Sir, good evening, everyone. What we're being requested tonight is for conditional rezoning of property located approximately south of I-94, east of County Line Road, near Springborn Road. It's 45.65 acres. The conditional rezoning request is from Ag, agricultural, to industrial, and it's being proposed by Great Lakes Trucking. Now, as I indicated, the applicant seeking conditional rezoning of the subject site for the purpose of developing a trucking operation, including office, warehouse, and logistics center. Conditional rezonings aren't used that often, but they are authorized under the Michigan zoning enabling legislation, which allows an applicant to request a rezoning based on certain voluntary conditions. Again, voluntary, fair part. If the rezoning is granted, and those conditions are not met, then within a reasonable time, that would happen, and it was the property revert back to the zoning prior to the rezoning being approved. In this case, the applicant's requesting rezoning subject to the following conditions. They would like, they're voluntarily agreeing to construct a multipurpose trucking facility, approximately 60,000 square feet, which will include, as I indicated before, warehousing office, loading and unloading. The warehouse will be approximately 40,000 square feet. The office space will be two-story with 5,000 feet on each floor. The remainder of the building will have five drive-through ways for light maintenance of their trucks and their trailers. One bay will be used as a wash bay. The southern end of the property along the DT easement will be gated and used as secure staging and parking trucks and trailers. And if the conditional rezoning is granted, the applicant is agreeing to submit a site plan for approval by us within 18 months after the approval of the rezoning for the township board. So they're requesting here tonight.
Thank you, Steve. Planners, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
There's a motion by Jim to open up the public hearing. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Carry. Okay. Great Lakes Trucking. Follow your folks. We'd like to know your presentation.
John Feltow, planning consultant, Cassin. Steve, thanks for the introduction. You did a great job. And members of the planning commission, we appreciate the opportunity to share our vision for the development of this project. As Steve mentioned, it's a work in progress, but we've put together a visual presentation here so you can see the depth of what we intend to do here and the quality of the project. I'm Paul Reschke. I'm with Spartan Real Estate and Development. I'm a representative for Great Lakes Trucking. With me are Peter DePore and John Reschke, also with Spartan, and Harold Simmons, who is the Director of Operations for Great Lakes Trucking. Before we get into the presentation, I might have Harold come up here, just spend a couple of minutes with me, and he can give you an overview of Great Lakes better than I can.
Good afternoon, everyone. As Paul said, my name is Harold Simmons. I'm the Director of Operations for Great Lakes Trucking. I'm also the Executive Assistant for Lily Sue Coon, who is the President and CEO of Great Lakes Trucking. And just in a brief overview, once she moved to Michigan 22 years ago, she opened a cleaning business, and after 10 years in 2013, she turned it into a trucking operation. Started out with just two trucks. And we started out in Sterling Heights, and she has since built it. We've been in a growth pattern, a positive growth pattern, every year and every year that we've been in business. So it's been a pretty good undertaking for us. It's a 100% woman-owned corporation, trucking company. Our first office was obviously in Sterling Heights, then we moved to Mounds Road in Warren. And we're currently at 2,700 east Nine Mile in Warren, and we're just simply outpacing our operation, our facility. So we talked to Paul and hired Paul to find us some property so that we could expand our operation. Paul found us his property here in Casco. After Lily and I drove out here and took a look at it and everything, it was actually perfect for us and what we want to do. Because when we build our building, we're going to be right up against the interstate. That would give us a little bit of advertisement and a lot of exposure, but yet we're in a position where it won't create a lot of traffic for everybody or anything else because you got to get off on 26 Mile, and you'd have to come down to County Line Road and make a left, and you come out to Springborn, and we're right there, you know? So it's not a lot of traffic in and out, and it won't bring a lot of other people for that simple fact. We were really pretty excited about that. And then there were a lot of other things that Paul had brought to our attention about Casco and everything, and watching the growth in Casco down 26 Mile and talking to some of the other businesses there, the truck wash and a few other ones, and it just really seemed like the perfect fit for us. So we went ahead and purchased the property, and we've been working now with Paul for about a year in the Pauls, you know? And I've been here once for another meeting with you guys and everything, and we've really enjoyed the turnout there and the positive feedback that's come off of it. We think and we believe that our operation will be positive for Casco as much as Casco will be great for us, you know? Lily is a loyal person. She takes care of the community. She takes care of the people who take care of her, so she'll be a great addition to your community. She'll be able to help you in lots of ways, and one is we're going to be bringing jobs. We'll be bringing tax money and a lot of other things into Casco, and we think we'll be able to bring it. And, you know, we're not just putting up a constant hut trucking company. I mean, we're going to put in a 40,000 square foot warehouse, which is going to be really great for our operation for a lot of things because we can bring it in, we'll store for different companies. Most of what we do is automotive, so we'll have that warehousing project, plus our trucking company and a brokerage company there. We'll have a lot of office space. Some may be available in the future for lease for a little while, but it'll be, we'll outgrow it pretty soon, you know? But this facility here in Casco will give us a bit of a footprint that we'll have a place that we can stay way past 10 or 20 years, and that's what we're looking for, you know? So that's pretty much us in a nutshell.
Okay. Thank you, John. Can we have your address, please?
Pardon?
Can we have your address or your address? Did you write it down?
Where we are now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Did you write that down?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. So I think the best way to do this is just give a visual here, and as Harold mentioned, our intent is to build a quality product here. We know where we are. We're right on the corner of Casco, almost, you know, the gateway into the community, and it's our intent to do something that's a showpiece and not just as, Harold, it's not just a typical warehouse. As we get into this, you'll see some of the things and the attention to detail that we're looking into, so go ahead and let that run through. I mean, we're doing some things on the warehouse that you typically don't see. We're going to use split face block, steel panels that run vertical like you see on a lot of dealerships, and those are actually bay windows. I don't know if anyone puts bay windows on a warehouse, but it gives us the opportunity to light it at night, which is a part of the promotion and marketing of the company as well as the site itself. So John, if you go back to the other piece. I'll go back to the slides. What we'd like to do here is kind of address the site, the location, talk about maybe the issues and concerns that could come up and how we're addressing those. You know, we've had the opportunity to work with you, Keith and Steve, and go through some of the things. There's a site, actually, the east side of that site, the line's probably not correct, but go to the next one. This is a recent aerial of the site. It shows the northern boundary would be I-94. The building would set in the opening there, and then there's the county line leading on to Springborn. That, there, the traffic's a little more normal now. This is to the east, the resident to the east, who has a lot of stuff going on. And then to the south of the property is Ponzio, the construction company, who usually has some trucks and some of their construction materials in the lot. So on the east side of the property, which you see right now, that tree row will probably be a buffer, a barrier. In that area of vacant land between the tree row and the residence will be undeveloped, and there's actually a bit of wetlands in that area anyway. So the development itself will happen to the west of the tree row. So on the north, you have a natural barrier of the highway. On the west, you have the natural barrier of County Line Road. You have pretty much an industrial use to the south with Ponzio and then the resident to the east. So we've tried to take every precaution or in the planning to understand, you know, what's surrounding us and create a project that, you know, doesn't create any kind of nuisance for the community. Now, our access, and we know one of the things we had to address, and if you can go back to a slide showing County Line Road. So initially, when we had discussions, we planned on, you know, we didn't want to be on Springborn Road for very long. We wanted to come right into the site, but, you know, it was requested that we do a traffic impact study, which we have a copy of, a 71-page report. Some of you have seen it, but our intent was to stay off the roads, get onto the site as quickly as we can, and minimize any impact. So when we talked to the road commissions from both McComb and St. Clair County, they said, "Well, we don't want that entrance right there at Springborn. You got to move it a couple hundred feet up." Let's go in a couple of slides. One more. So that's, that, no. Yeah, go to the next one, right there. So you can see how Springborn enters, we go about 200 feet, and that was a recommendation from the St. Clair County Road Commission to move that in and then enter the sites. So as far as truck traffic goes, I actually want to point it out. We will be coming from I-94, make a left onto County Line Road, and come into Springborn, and then enter the site up there. So we are...
Just a quick question. So the distance from where you enter in, Joe, the start of that overpass, how far?
Oh, from Springborn to the overpass?
Yep.
It's like over 800, close to 900 feet from the peak of the overpass. And that was one of the things that was a concern, was traffic coming southbound on County Line. Would that be an issue with trucks potentially pulling out onto County Line? We engaged Wade Trim, who's done the corridor study for Marine City Highway. They did a traffic impact study with traffic from all different times. We have a 71-page report, and their conclusion was that there were no traffic controls that were needed. Everything falls within the guidelines. Now, does that mean, as we get into this further, that we're not opposed to doing some things? We want to work with you and satisfy any concerns that might exist there. The other thing they requested was that we, if you go back, John, to that current slide we were on, or actually go to, yeah, they requested that we put a taper here, and there's going to be some things we have to do to Springborn, too, with deceleration lanes. And once we get into the full planning, we'll address those issues. So the amount of time that we're on Casco roads is maybe 30 seconds, and the amount of time coming off County Line is about 300 feet of road that's actually in Casco Township. So that's an aerial overview. Go to the next one. Right there is good. So everything up front, as far as, you know, we're at the corner or gateway to Casco, so everything from the front that faces the freeway, et cetera, we've put a lot of effort and design into creating, you know, a pretty nice look. This is two-story glass.
Can you back up two slides?
Sure.
So there's actually two intended entrances off of Springborn. The one for the trucks.
Yeah, the one up here.
So the first one and the second one would be more...
This is all just car. So we have no reason to go with trucks down there. We have no reason to go this way on County Line, even though it is a truck route. Our traffic will be right here.
Yep.
And down to Marine City and going west to get back onto the freeway. We have no reason to even go down Marine City Highway, so we have less impact than any trucking company that already exists in the community. Pardon me?
But you're on Springborn.
For about 300 feet.
Yep.
And we're planning to improve Springborn in that area. So all the staging of trucks is to the rear, out of sight. Move ahead a couple more slides, if you would. Couple more. So the visual is, go back one. Everything's out of sight, hidden from sight. We have tree row barrier on the east side, and anything residents who go down Springborn, this is what they're going to see.
Gross. Agreed.
Let's hear your opinion.
That's why we're here.
That's actually a beautiful building.
No, it's not.
Okay, we're not planning to live there, but anyways...
You're right. That's the point. That's why we're here. You want to build this beautiful building, and you're trying to sell it for how beautiful it is, and you just said you're not planning on living there, so you don't care what it's going to look like.
Folks, we need to be able to make this presentation, and then we'll give you a chance.
You do have to look at it, and that's why it's spectacular.
It looks like the new group old plan.
It's not spectacular. There's nothing spectacular about it.
Everything about that building is. I'm not going to argue with you. Your questions will address it.
That's why we're here. Mr. Chair, if I may.
Thank you.
With the input of this presentation, then the audience will have a chance to stand up and say what they need to say.
When that time comes, can we go back to the PowerPoint?
Yes, the chair allows them, absolutely.
We can do that. And I think Paul would be more than happy to go back to that point. Paul, anything else you want to add to that at this point?
I mean, I'll just reiterate what Harold said. This is kind of a great American story. I mean, here you have immigrants from the Ukraine came to the United States for better opportunity, worked their tails off, and have created a company that employs a lot of people, and their intent is to hire from the community, and there's opportunity. And this is an industry that's not going away. It's how all our product moves. 80% of every product moves through the trucking world, and the warehousing and, you know, the repair and maintenance is of their own fleet. There's nothing major going on there. It's just typical, you know, basic maintenance to control the investment that they have into their equipment. So I think it creates a great opportunity and...
Harold, how many employees do you currently have? How many employees do you currently have?
Right now, we have 43 drivers, and then we have seven office staff, and eight would be, including myself.
Thank you.
So 50 people total?
Pardon?
50 people total?
Yeah, we have 50.
Okay.
I think one other thing we might want to add, if those trucks aren't on the road, they're not doing their job. So the trucks in the lot are maybe on the weekend, and, you know, during the week they're gone. And the amount of truck traffic that this company will have, 10 to 15 trucks a day, you know, that's not a lot. And, you know, there is, we project growth being in that building, but the impact is going to be minimal in the scheme of things. So we're not adding the whole lot. We're not really adding anything to the traffic in Casco. We're on a joint McComb and St. Clair County road for...
What's the weight of those trucks?
The weight?
Pardon?
The weight of the trucks?
They're loaded trucks. Legally, we can gross 80,000 pounds. We haul a lot of automotive, so usually about 50,000 to 55,000.
Are they all tractor-trailers?
Pardon?
Are all the trucks tractor-trailers?
Yes. Yes. We use the racks of Volvo tractors and 53-foot stow and drive van trailer.
Okay, why don't we do this, folks? We're pretty well set there.
Yeah. I mean, certainly you're going to have questions, and we want to address those questions.
So here's what I'd like to do. We'll have our public questions now, and after that, we will have the planners ask their questions, if there are any more, because you're probably going to get some more questions as here from the folks in the area. Okay? So why don't we start that with, can we just start in the first row and just work our way through? And if you'd like to come and speak, please do. And your name, and we have to make sure, if I don't give, if Brenda doesn't give the address, she will be asking me all week, so I don't want that to happen. So if you could, please, your name, and just make sure Brenda has your address, okay?
Anyone who did not sign on the sign-up sheet there, if you would give your name and address. I know many of you signed in, so if you've already given that, you don't need to repeat it.
Thank you, Brenda. Okay, anyone else in the first row?
Sure.
Yeah.
Steve Pearson, 12297 Putty Gump Road. I just got a few things I kind of want to mention. Why not 26 Mile Road? Why Springborn Road? Seems like, you know, the access for the trucking, the business case would be on 26 Mile Road. The infrastructure is getting there. Utilities are there. What's going to make, this business can be exclusively for Great Lakes Trucking, or are you planning on leasing this business case out to other trucking companies, too?
No. This is specifically the new headquarters for Great Lakes Trucking, so there will not be other trucking companies in there. That's not the intent here. We look for a lot of properties. I mean, part of, we know of the property you talk about on 26 Mile, but it's only about 300 feet wide, so it just doesn't give us the dimensions we need to the building and the maneuverability behind it to pull a truck into a bay or even into a loading dock. and the maneuverability behind it to pull a truck into a bay or even into a loading dock. So, that's the reason.
To me, it just seems like the wrong location. It's like, quite new grounds. You know, in a year, nobody's going to go to because it's not right off the exit. Some other companies are going to come in Twenty-Six Mile Road and take over.
This offers a lot of security as well.
This will be a-
The specific location. I mean, you know, how much traffic do you have on Springborn Road? And then to the east of us, we're going to have wetlands and then you're going to have that tree area and everything. So, that offers us a lot of protection for our trailers and the freight that we have in the yard, you know what I mean? And then, obviously, you know, you've got Pond Hill on the other side of us. So we get like the best of both worlds. And you guys get a beautiful building representing Casco at the very beginning of Casco on Springborn Road and that area. We get exposure as a trucking company to a lot of the executives that run up and down, you know, between Detroit and Fort Huron and Maryville and all that up through there. So they see us and they see our building and its first-class operation and sticks in their mind. And it's clean, it's neat, it's planted. But on the other hand, you know, whenever they look at that, it just has a positive image and a positive flow. But then, like I said, we get the security of that location because it just, and nobody that, you know, you don't have any business over there. Sure, it would be easy to spot.
Exactly.
Is the truck phase, it looks like there's only four or five. What is the other square footage of that two-story space for?
The main building that you see to your left with the main windows, that's warehouse space.
All for Great Lakes Trucking?
Yeah, incoming and outgoing freight and stuff stored for a period of time depending on customer needs. The middle is two-story office.
Seems like a beautiful development for fifteen trucks a day to utilize, except I'm busy this on weekends. I mean, it's-
Well, like any company, if they're not out on the road at customers and hauling, you know, then the company's in trouble. Its guys come home on the weekend and, you know, the tractors and trailers will be parked in the back end.
Facility hours?
Uh, yeah. Hours of operation.
The office is open, you know, the yard, obviously, for the trucks coming in will be open twenty-four hours for guys coming home at night and going out. But the hours of operation for the office and everything is, we open up at eight o'clock in the morning and I close the office at six. And we've kind of, all the office staff pretty much goes home at five o'clock in the evening. And we can adjust our hours if it looked like it was going to create a problem, but we like to start, you know, seven and eight. And then for our mechanics, we bring some of the mechanics come in, you know, at seven so that they can work to four. And then we have some to come in at nine so that they can work to six. That way, we can maintain our vehicles better. And one of the good things about our shop, there's not going to be a lot of junk laying around anywhere. I mean, you know, we're really doing tires and brakes and air leaks and oil changes and P M services. I mean, if you find it through FMCSA, you're going to find out that our safety scores are really low. So that makes us really happy and everything. But, I mean, it's not like we're setting our overhaul and motors and transmissions and all that heavy kind of work, you know, like a truck dealership or something, so.
I feel like I could go on now about the whole, pardon me? I could go on now about our lifestyle around here and the way we want to live and the businesses we want and public safety and all that kind of stuff. But it just, to me, it just seems like it's not the greatest location.
I mean, we understand that.
I respect your business. I bet you have an amazing business. I just feel like it's better served in a different part of town.
Well, I mean, our impact on the community in general is, like I said, it's minimal. We're right at the very end of it. You know, yes, the property is located in Casco, but all the traffic will be going through other communities. And we will, we have no reason to go eastbound on Marine City Highway. Our traffic's going to be all going to the freeway. I mean, we just, there's not a lot of choices out there. You know, that's why some of this stuff is moving out in this direction. Most of McComb County is, you know, you can't find a site big enough. And everything on the backside will be gated and secured. If you go a couple slides ahead, there is a pipeline. Keep going. If you see the strips of grass there and then the openings to where the trailers are staged in the back, that's a pipeline there. And so they'll be fencing and gating to secure that whole area.
Good, Paul, thank you.
Just a question. I don't know how this all works, so-
Your name is?
My name is Margaret. I live on Springborn. Brenda, one oh two three zero.
Are you right by that?
Pardon?
Are you right by that or are you not?
Yeah, I am.
When you say you're right by it, I'll close.
Kitty corner.
Kitty corner.
I would not probably see it from, I would, but I'm six hundred feet from the road, so I wouldn't see it if it was directly across the street from me. But it doesn't mean I want it there. I don't think it's the appropriate location. But what I want to know is we actually, do we have any recourse? Do you listen to us?
Well, yes, we listen to you. That's the reason for the public.
Okay, I didn't know if it's all about tax dollars for you or if you really care about, that I don't want a big commercial business on Springborn.
Oh, yes, we do.
Rated agricultural and it shouldn't necessarily be rezoned and the people who live there is-
Absolutely, absolutely. We'll be all Casco residents.
We are.
All of us Florida members.
Yeah.
So we know. Okay, thank you.
But it's not on your street?
Yet.
You're right?
Yet.
I got ninety-four in my front yard.
You have what?
I have ninety-four in my front yard.
Well, I have ninety-four in my backyard, but I don't want a trucking plant in my front yard.
Thank you. Appreciate that. First of all, a gentleman in the back, please.
Uh, yeah, I just-
Your name is?
Brian Nickisch. I signed in and lived on, I live on Lindsay.
Okay.
I question the ten to fifteen trucks a day when we have forty-three operators running daily.
Yeah, forty-three trucks in forty-eight states. Okay, and we run nationwide. So, that's basically, that's less than one truck a state. Okay, and out of all the trucks that are running to California, all the trucks are running to Texas. So, basically, your ten to fifteen trucks a day is going to be my local trucks bringing freight in and out of that warehouse right there. And that's the biggest part. But then, I mean, you know, everybody's going to come home. Everybody that lives here, so, and we try to get all of our drivers home on the weekend. So Friday will probably be your busiest day. And it kind of goes odd, that'll happen mostly in the night on Thursday night through Friday morning coming in. And then you might get a little bit during the day, but then everybody else, a big truck coming in again late at night on Saturday or Friday night through Saturday morning. So, when we tell you ten to fifteen trucks a day, you're going to have three local trucks or five depending. And, you know, they run up to Fort Huron, they load, they bring parts back, they run down into Detroit and Ronulans and everything. Run all the way to Walker, Michigan. So, I mean, if you just sit there, forty-three sounds like a large number. But when you have ten trucks a week headed to California, you know, I mean, that takes ten on the way back, ten coming out. And then you have fifteen that are going to Texas and then you have the Washington staters and the East Coast guys who are just not here that night.
Understood, but with the fifteen trucks a day and your stated plan for growth, I think everybody that lives in Casco understands how long it already takes to get to ninety-six or to Twenty-Six and ninety-four. And it's getting worse.
All I know is-
We're back here from Twenty-Six.
Currently, I have fifty people and a lot of them live way down in Detroit. So when we move up here, we're going to be hiring from this area. And as we grow, we're going to be hiring in this area. I feel like that we all-
Won't you bring your same fifty people up here? Why would you be hiring here?
Ma'am?
Do what?
Ma'am?
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Otherwise, we won't.
I'm sorry.
We won't get through. But we can have you talk again, okay? Does that answer your question, sir?
I don't know that it answers it, but I didn't want to state the traffic issues, not just in Casco.
Right. Okay. Thank you, sir. We'll go to the back row.
My name is Kyle Kappa, five three two two, Church Road. So, I don't really have any questions for the Great Lakes guys, but I do want to make one comment to you guys directly. Just, you said you're interested in security, but for us, for those of us living in Casco, we all know that your next-door neighbor is across ninety-four is probably the highest primary in Casco. So, keep in mind, we think about security. That's the last place I would want to move for security. But anyway, just now, I'll address the council or the commission here. So just from a, just from a planning standpoint, Casco has a lot of available space. Already zoned industrial, general business on Twenty-Six Mile Corridor, as the gentleman mentioned already. Much of it undeveloped. So, your obligation to consider a rezoning is really minimal. You know, if you were, if we were maxed out in that capacity, you know, you could, you'd have a strong consideration, a strong case to add additional zoning for that. But because we have also available real estate already, it's really a tough argument to say it's changed agricultural to general business. Or was, were they asking for industrial or general business? Doesn't really, yeah. So even more so because that's the most available real estate on Twenty-Six is industrial. So, you know, that being said, you have minimal obligation if you're worried about recourse or, you know, if they want to challenge it, you know, you can easily say, hey, listen, we've got lots of industrial space for you. Right here, take it. You know, so just keep that in mind as you're going through your decision-making process. And of course, you know, agricultural is already diminishing zone other where outside of Casco. So, we've got probably the most agricultural space between Lennox, Ira, Chesterfield. I don't know about China, but we're, we definitely have a ton of agricultural space and that's one of the good things about Casco, right? And, you know, if you look at the zoning map, it's all green. And that's what, that's what drew me here and I love it. I love that part about Casco. I utilize my property for agricultural use. I know a lot of people do as well. So, I really like to see that stay that way. Not to say I'm not blocking of businesses in the industrial sector. I think that Twenty-Six Mile Corridor has got a lot of opportunity for development, great infrastructure upgrades to bring to Township. You know, there's all that wooded area on the corner of Twenty-Six and County Line. That parcel right there is bigger than this one on Twenty-Six and County Line, right on that northeast corner, right, I think. Also, I'm sure much more expensive than agricultural property. That's not the county's problem, right? You guys, you guys have zoned it available for industrial use and that's your obligation. It's not, you can't control how a rent owner wants to sell it or not, but your obligation is met because it's available. So that's the other thing. So if I owned that property per se, which I don't, own any of that industrial property, and you rezoned cheaper property to match that industrial zoning, now you've totally undercut me as an investor and property owner. Because this agricultural property is going to be a fraction of the price of property on Twenty-Six Mile, obviously. And I'm sure that's a major driver, but we're developing this as opposed to something on Twenty-Six, so. Just, those are just the points I wanted to make. You guys really have an obligation. I know you're just making a recommendation to council from here, so. Just my advice.
Thank you, sir. Steve, do you want to comment on that?
Actually, can I make a quick comment to that? I appreciate what you're saying. We did-
Paul, wait just one second. Steve, in what regard, I'm sorry? Well, just as far as what the gentleman was saying, as far as industrial zoning, we already have industrial zoning.
We do have industrial zoning, but they do have the right to request industrial zoning. Based on our master plan, we show the future of that area as office. So, he's requesting that, you know, he be allowed, they be allowed to put industrial in that area.
Just so you understand that part of it, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
We do have a master plan out there and it is slated down that one area, two row in that area.
Okay, I guess I missed that part of it, yeah. I thought it's, I thought it pretty much stopped.
And then down Twenty-Six, right?
I thought it pretty much stopped right from this part until it starts. Maybe I misread the plan, but I thought the master plan went up to about that point.
Yeah.
And then went down Twenty-Six, but I thought that parcel was excluded, but my apologies if it wasn't. But anyways, agricultural now.
We understand what you're saying. And a lot of us own property, obviously, in Casco. So, we know where you're coming from.
Yeah, I hope you all do agree.
There we go. Paul, did you have a-
Yeah, I can share. We did look at opportunities in the Twenty-Six Mile Corridor and we actually bid on a twenty-acre piece. And the owner of the property, even though we matched his asking price, decided to pull it back and develop it himself in industrial. So, the corridor is hot, it's growing. You know, you look at the big sixty-acre parcel there on the Ira side and they want prices that are like the same in Troy. They're looking at a hundred and thirty-five to a hundred and forty thousand an acre for that property. And they want, they want to own the buildings, so that wasn't an option for us.
I'll throw a shit. You know, it's a forty-seven acre piece. It's only farmable for twenty-nine and a half or thirty acres. It's even farmable. But it qualifies for all the added exemptions on taxes. So when we bring our building here and our business here, that's going to be a lot more taxes going to the schools and everything else that's added. They don't pay anything to your school system.
Do you know what's-
And we're going to bring money to your school system. So if education is important to you-
Do you know what school district it is?
Huh?
Do you know what school district it is?
At this point, I don't, but I know if Casco keeps growing, whatever the case is, it will be better.
You answer me. All right, let's move on. Sir, you, did you have something else? Thank you, buddy.
No, no, sir, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Chuck Gibson, Church Road. Got my information on the sheet there. With the traffic study done on County Line, right now, I travel that for forty-four years going to work. And traffic coming out of the trailer park and that, it's sometimes a day, it can cut you off quite a bit. Traffic going down the road is non-stop, car after car after car. And there's been some accidents coming off of Springborn. People have been killed in the past coming down there. So are you looking at possibly putting a light somewhere in that area? And as we've seen Twenty-Six get busier and busier with the new hospitals and everything, two lanes is just not doing it. It should be increasing width. And if we keep expanding down County Line, which we're going to need to be getting wider on the road there. And on the presentation you showed me, I didn't see whereabouts a pond for taking the runoff of water. And the sewer and water system in that area is not too good either. So, I was kind of hoping-
Yeah, there's definitely an extensive swimming pool. There's actually two of them there.
Can you plug that with the top?
There's, yeah, there's plenty of consideration for that. We know that's something you have to do and it's in there and the final plans aren't there yet. But if you go back to a couple of those slides and shows, you can see where we've made accommodation. Those, right there, there's two ponds. They both have fountains right along Springborn there.
And one last thing is, has the county ever considered putting an entrance and exit ramp off of County Line? To take away some of the traffic on Twenty-Six?
Not to my knowledge, but I can tell you there have been rumors abounding on Meisner Road. Whether that happens or not, I don't know. We'll have to wait and see. But I can tell you, I live on Meisner Road and we are getting a lot more traffic over there and a lot more trucks. And that's going to become an issue for us. So we understand that one too. So Chuck, I agree with what you're saying. We've had a couple of studies done with these folks. Believe me, we sat down a couple of times with them. And we are trying to get and make our way through there. The interesting part about County Line is you have two counties, two county road commissions involved. That gets to be an interesting conversation. So, I think we will be able to do a lot more with County Line than maybe we haven't been. So, I think we will be able to do a lot more with County Line than maybe we have in Casco.
Well, they always fight over who's going to take care of it.
Yeah. I think they've got it worked out pretty well now. Anything else, Chuck?
Chuck, just further to expound on that. The traffic study was specifically for the impact coming off and going onto County Line Road. And the study indicated that we didn't need traffic control. Now, as I mentioned in the beginning, that was in one of our first discussions. That was certainly an item you brought up, Keith, and the concern. And, you know, people coming over that overpass and heading south on County Line, will they be able to see the trucks? Do they have enough time? And the study said, yes, they will. Now, are we opposed to any kind of traffic control? No, we're not. There's been discussions of maybe even having on the north side of the overpass, even having some kind of blinking light or signage to, you know, to make people aware that are coming over that hill southbound, that there could be incoming traffic. And once again, the amount of traffic, you're, you're looking at fifteen, ten, fifteen minutes a day of traffic on those roads when you look at the numbers. And, you know, like Harold said, the trucks come in starting Wednesday through, through Saturday morning. So, that traffic is spread out when, when they come and park on the site before they go back out.
And the other thing about the traffic is, it's not going to take long. It's a community. There, most of the people that use that road are going to know we're there. It's not going to be a surprise to them. I mean, it's, it's a big building, and it's going to be there, it's going to be lit up well. But I mean, if you live anywhere in the area, after a while, I mean, you know it's there. You're going to know it during the construction phase and everything else. I mean, the only people it's going to be a big surprise to are people that are just using the road that don't live in the area.
Thanks, Chuck. Our next, sir, do you have any comments?
Yeah, Robert Laga, I'm on Casco Road, I mean, Church Road in Casco. And I know what you're saying about the building, pictures look good and everything, and your security is fine. Well, that's for you. I mean, we're not worried about people stealing your stuff. That's your problem. That's what you got to do, make it look nice. And that's fine. It looks good in the picture. And you developing your business is what you want to do, that's the American way and all of that. What we're concerned about is the traffic and the country turning into, as you said, Troy or something, or Sterling Heights, where it's wall-to-wall people, wall-to-wall everything, and slowly creeps out. Maybe we can avoid it. That's the way it's going to be in life, you know? Because that's how it's moved out north. But look at the problems with the, the garbage dump thing, and all their trucks come from Canada, and then more trucks, and three hospitals down there. And all that traffic, it's going to go on twenty-six mile anyway, whether this is part of it or not. It's just a lot of traffic. What's it going to do to the roads? What's it going to do congestion? What's it going to do to really getting closer to the people further north and the people around there? So, that's our concern, I think, as people here. Because we moved out here to get away from that, yet it comes, it's creeping. Look at Chesterfield Township, and McComb Township, and all that, how they built them. But if everything's done like he says, good for them, but we're still concerned.
Sure. Thank you, sir. Well, wait, hang on. Let me get through this.
Yes, so we're together. Anderson Roger Rashowski.
Church Road, may I have my name down there? So, a couple of questions. Can you go back to the slide of the overview of the top view, the aerial?
Sure.
How many trucks did you say you're going to have? Not that one, just go to your referrals plan.
Showing aerials, Joe.
No, no. So, fourteen, fifteen trucks. Why is such a big parking lot with that many trailers?
We tell you there's fourteen, fifteen trucks going in and out of there a day. We have forty-three trucks. We do have eighty trailers, because that's how you pay money, keeping the trucks moving. When they come in, they drop a trailer, they hook up two trailers, they leave. We lease trailers to General Motors, Tricer, all these different companies up in Port Huron. We go up there, we drop a trailer, we hook up a trailer, we bring them back. So, that is the reason that we have a lot of credit parking back there. Almost every trucking company out there that's successful has a three-to-one ratio of trailer to tractor.
So, if I understand this correctly, it's going to be a beautiful building to ninety-four, but everybody coming, coming down County Line is going to see just what we see at Javalter. A bunch of semi-trailers just sitting in the parking lot, correct?
Well, if you're looking from the top, you're going to see it. But I mean, you know, the building in itself and the curvature, and Paul and his people. Let me just express it. Look at the property itself. What's it really worth? We've got a pipeline running through it. What other business is going to be able to take and buy it and pipeline? It's thirty acres agriculture and a community that's growing all the way around it. So, if you don't allow us, what are you going to have?
Agriculture. That's the whole concern of everybody.
That land isn't going to lay vacant.
I understand the view in that. We will be putting berms along Springborn. Yeah, we understand that.
Let me ask you this.
Do the building, the silos, locks, locks. But the grassy areas will have berms and landscapes.
I understand. So, Great Lakes Trucking, move over on Nine Mile, what, two thousand eighteen, nineteen? Correct. How come you haven't done anything to that building on Nine Mile? It looks the same as it does on the day that you guys purchased it. But you're telling us that you're going to keep this building up, and it's going to look nice, and it's not going to look like a bunch of garbage.
We're actually adding to that building as we speak.
Looking at it right now?
We're in the process of purchasing land behind it.
So, I'm asking you, how many trailers do you think would be parked there? Because at your facility right now, I count nineteen off of Google Maps with only ten power units to it. So, that's nine trailers sitting there, just right now in this small little area.
We also have property leased all over the city, and that's one of the reasons we're trying to build a piece of property, go and pull them all over together, so I don't have to keep paying leases at two-four, two-six old mountain road. And I don't have to pay leases over on different areas to Detroit. We want to consolidate and bring our equipment to one place.
So, my next question is, your trucks are going to run from Port Huron to Detroit?
Some of them, yeah.
Okay. So, what's to say your trucks aren't going to bypass the sheriff department's one motor unit, that commercial unit, go down Springborn, hit B Thieb, hit Meltrum, hit Church, and screw the roads up?
Why would trucks do that when you can't even make a turn?
Because you're not going to be fifty thousand, you're going to be eighty thousand, or you're going to be eighty-five thousand.
Why would you do that?
Stop, Harold. Because it's pennies per pound when you go overweight. So, why would you just not save the pennies per pound to go off the freeway where everybody knows MSP is going to be out there with their commercial units? And with one sheriff?
Look at my scores on FMCSA. I don't care if they set up every single day. They can set up, we will probably pull in, and we have no problem with that. Our equipment passes.
Most of these trucks sitting in the yard aren't loaded.
So, then that just brings in what? So, just an ISO, really?
There's no ISO there.
So, you, you mean to tell me, when you go past your balter, you don't think that's an ISO with all them Richard Chay, those trailers just sitting there off the freeway? That looks horrible. How can you say, you come out to the country, and that's in Mount Evans? That's, you know, this is the country, you come out here and you see this, it's like, that's not the same.
We don't, we don't have any trailers up front. They're all in the back.
Right now.
But you're, there's no, there's no way. I do have a couple more questions, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Could you request the public address their questions to you? That the applicants refrain from arguing back and forth, and at the end of the public comments, the applicant can address anything that's outstanding, so that everybody has a chance to say their views?
So, next question would be to the council is, that traffic study was done in April, correct?
Correct.
All right. So, did they take into consideration the new St. John Ascension going in with Beaumont possibly turning into another, a hospital, a full-time hospital, not just an outpatient? Has this been taken into consideration? Because if you're coming off of ninety-four, now you're going to have semi-trucks loading up at County Line, trying to turn northbound, which is going to cause even more traffic. And if any of you were between three and five, and you're trying to get on the County Line, it's a pain in the butt. You can't turn north. You got to sit there, even with the traffic light.
So, you want to respond to that?
I mean, we're, we're making it sound like there's a constant flow of trucks twenty-four hours a day. The amount of truck traffic here is ten to fifteen. In the early stages, we might get up to twenty-five down the road in years, which is quite minimal. And all of those roads are truck routes. County Line is a truck route in the county system. We have, like I said, we have no. Our amount of time on County Line Road is from this site to Marine City Highway. We make a right and go to I ninety-four. We're in another community. There are trucks. You're not going to stop these trucks from coming down Marine City Highway. They do. And, and we're not adding that much at all to the traffic. It's, you know, if there's other sites on twenty-six mile, they're going to get developed. There may be truck traffic there. I mean, it's a.
All right, Paul.
We, we.
Anything else, sir?
My question is, so that's twenty-six mile. There's not any lights on twenty-six mile. Where's your light at? It's at County Line, and again, back what, at the wires, and then at ninety-four. So, I do have one more question. Truck wash. So, are you going to tap into the well water and what, wash trucks with that?
We have not determined our, our water system yet. Those are some of the things we're working on together. And there are ways to do it. I believe the truck wash that's on twenty-six mile right now uses well water.
So, that it just taps into the wells? And then I did have one other question for you. When was the master plan ready for that, that location, that area?
When was it done?
Yes, when was your master, your master plan ready?
Oh, gosh. It was originally done in two thousand and eight, but every five years, it was reaffirmed by the planning mission.
And then my next question, what does the future master plan have that piece of property zone as?
Office.
Office, okay. And one last question is, what is the property next to this zone as?
Me to the, to the south?
It would be to the east.
To the east, that's A. To the south? That was business.
So, Pontio is business?
Yeah.
This is the ones to be industrial and agricultural.
Correct.
And then residential after that? Everything else is residential in that area, correct?
No, the zoning map from Pontio is down along the.
Oh, going south.
It's all zoned at current time business.
But, but nothing on Springborn is zoned as industrial or business, commercial, anything currently, correct?
At the current time, no.
All right, okay. I believe I have some other questions.
All right, thank you, sir.
I do have something to say.
Oh, yes.
So, I called the company today. Was Lily working?
Yes, Lily.
Okay, so I spoke to Lily myself, and I asked her, is this the company that's going to be building, that wants to build on County Line and Springborn? And she said, yes. And I said, are your trucks going to be going up and down our dirt roads and County Line daily? And she said, yep. And I said, what do you guys distribute? What do you guys ship? And she told me Mamie Auto Parts, from the horse's mouth. And if this is a fully woman-owned company, where's the woman that's supporting it? Where's the female? I'm sorry, Casco, where's the female? If this is a woman-owned company, where's the female? Where's the female face? And she's the one, from the horse's mouth, I spoke to Lily today, the owner. And she said, these trucks will be going up and down our dirt roads with auto parts. I spoke to her.
Okay, Harold, do you want to handle that one?
Yeah, that wasn't quite the conversation, but either way, two things I want to add to that. One is, she did call, Lily did tell me about it, and she asked if the trucks would be using the Casco roads. And Lily's answer was, yes. We're going to get off on twenty-six mile. But Lily didn't get a chance to answer that part before the phone got out of the phone. She got off of twenty-six, go to County Line, make a left, go to Springborn. That's all we're going to be using.
I told Lily I'd see her at the meeting.
And then the other issue is, on the truck wash, whatever water system we end up with, we're a first-class operation, and we're very conservative. So, there'll be a filtration system put in place so that we can recycle the water. Now, does that mean we're not going to use more than one truck wash? No, but at least the water will be recycled and cleaned, cleaned. And the filters and all that trash that comes out of it will be recycled and taken to a refuge facility, not put back into the groundwater or anything like that. So.
Harold, I want to jump in. Those are just a matter of course of procedure as we go through things. The planning commission, they're going to have requirements for us, and those will be addressed.
Yes.
To your, to the satisfaction of the ordinance.
One more question, ma'am, please.
Yes, so, okay, so.
No, I just want to follow up with, if, if he can comment and say, what would be the point? The point is, you're here to make money, that's it. Okay, you're selling this property.
Okay, folks, we're not going to get into.
But I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you can't say that, you can't say that the vehicles aren't going to be going up and down the gravel road.
Yes, we can't say that. They have no reason to go down Springborn.
Really, they do.
Is this your company?
Okay, let's move on.
Sir, what's your next comment, please?
Anthony Chmody, Meisner Road, ninety-eight-five. So, first you guys started saying ten, fifteen trucks a day, then you started leaking out up to twenty-five. Obviously, you're going to want to do as many as you can. Ten, fifteen trucks a day ain't going to pay, that's three million dollar building right there.
If that was three million, we'd be happy.
Well, we're building a ten million dollar building.
I don't understand one question. How come when we talk, they can interrupt, but when they're talking, we can't?
Yeah, well, my company's building.
So, this gentleman here has the floor right now, so keep talking, sir.
Okay, so, that proves my point even more. Whatever you said, eleven million, ten, fifteen trucks a day isn't going to pay for it. So, I don't know if your business plan and the transit study are meshing together. Because there's no way that's going to pay for it.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, I mean, how do we watchdog this? Oh, yeah, ten, fifteen a day, and then you turn around, there's going to be fifty a day. How is, how is there a watchdog for, because business plans are three to five years usually. What about after that?
I don't know if anyone can, can tell you exactly what any of these businesses are going to do or not do, whether you're on twenty-six mile, whether you're in.
Okay, here, I'll, I'll say this. Keep it at ten, fifteen trucks a day. That place is going to go out of business, and it's going to be an empty building. So, then.
Okay, I mean, is that your comment, sir?
No, I'm not, no.
Okay.
So, is that the same builder as the one that did the Grupo Antolin building on twenty-four mile? Because that plant that you showed your PowerPoint looks exactly the same. Like carbon copy with all the skylights and everything. So, if you drive over, right now, twenty-four and that expressway, you'll see that new industrial park. It's like a cookie cutter right there. And that's kind of what, you know, this is going to start to look like. And they have berms and stuff, but with a two-story building, you see right, you see all that. Lights up the sky like an airport. Yeah, the exit that that gentleman mentioned, the push for, you'll probably be trying to push for an exit and entrance ramp right there on County Line. Because that's what would make sense, right? And I'm sure we don't want that either. So, I know that you're not really concerned with, you know, us living by it, but I work in Sterling Heights and Warren every day. And obviously, I don't live in Sterling Heights or Warren. Do you guys live by your plants?
I'm not sure it's relevant to it.
Well, it's completely irrelevant to the residents.
Yes, if you live close to the plants.
Is that your, what's your question, sir?
My question is, do they live by their existing facilities today?
Do they live by their existing facility? Is that a question?
Yeah.
I'll answer that. I mean, we're like any business, people live everywhere. People commute to work wherever they, wherever they have a good job. I mean, I think it's irrelevant to, to what we're talking about here. Will people maybe?
That's the only reason we're here, we don't want it by where we live. I work in Warren and Sterling Heights, and I drive an hour one way every day, so I don't. I work in Warren and Sterling Heights and I drive an hour one way every day, so I don't have to...
We're all looking at that twenty-five acres that's on the other side of that other house so that Lily and Ollie can go home back there.
All right, any other questions, sir? Pardon? The gentleman behind you, do you have any more questions? No, he answered twenty-four shift operation. I mean, there's gotta be some ordinances against some of, some of these things already, I would imagine. No matter what the zoning is, right?
I don't know of any for hourly, but if it's something that concerns you, maybe we have to look at it.
Yeah, three in the morning.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Next gentleman. Is that, to you, sir?
I'm all set.
You're all set?
I don't have anything.
You don't have anything? Okay, very good.
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe this lady had a chance to finish her comment. So, Council, they keep saying that it's gonna be so beautiful. They keep stressing the fact that this is going to be more for like, what is the word I'm looking for? More beneficial for them for the traffic. They, they wanna promote themselves out in our township, on 94. They keep saying, on 94, the promotion is on 94. I don't care about them promoting their business. I don't want it out here. I don't care that they wanna promote themselves. Keep it down on, on nine mile, Warren or Sterling Heights. I understand you guys are growing, but you, you don't need to come out here. And as for the zone, was this approved, like this, the zoning, is it, was it approved in previous meetings? Or is this the zoning meeting to approve it? To have this resolved?
This is conditional use for mid-zoning.
So, so did they, did they, did they post it in the paper, like to have it resolved? Okay, cause I didn't see it anywhere.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, folks, we're gonna move on. Thank you for your input. We're gonna go down to the planners. Does she close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman? I'd like to clear the planners and then go to the again folks. Why don't we go through the planners, see if there's any other questions? And then we'll close the public hearing. Any other questions from the planners that you would like to discuss with the petitioner or the folks that are here this evening?
I have one.
Sure.
Is this a, gonna be a privately owned business or a service center with a truck wash?
It's a privately owned business.
So the, the truck wash or the truck service would not be open to any other companies to bring their trucks in there and wash them or have serviced on?
This is to service their own fleet.
Thanks, John.
Okay, I have a question.
Good, Gina.
How much are you looking to expand from where you are on nine mile? I mean, you're saying you have ten to fifteen trucks a day there.
Correct.
But this is such a much bigger facility that you're looking at.
Well, it, it is a bigger facility. However, we're pretty much maxed to what we can build there based on the constraints. I mean, we have to deal with sanitation and waste and we gotta figure that part as we go through the process. And that pipeline is, and it's a, that, that pipeline hinders anything that we could add to this building. That building is what it is and...
How does the size of this building compare to your current building?
Oh, it's bigger for sure. The other building's twenty-five thousand.
So essentially, you're looking to double the size of your facility?
Yeah.
Would that, would that equate to doubling the fleet vehicles as well and workforce?
I, I can appreciate all the comments about the traffic, but once again, and, and the one gentleman said, if you only have fifteen trucks a day, you're gonna go out of business. If you're moving freight, you better not be sitting in that yard. You better be on the road across the country. And that's what they do, all, all over the country. I think we had a conversation about this with another company and we went to look at it at Christmas Day. And their lot was full. I can't remember if it was you or Steve. That lot is almost only just a backup for those, for those periods of time where, where, where there's a slowdown and it's really holidays. You know, on weekends, there'll be some empty trucks there. You know, that's another thing to address too. These aren't typically full trucks. The trucks that are sitting there are, are empty.
I know we've talked a lot about the trucks. What's the purpose of, of a warehouse of this size if all of your business is on the road?
Well, a lot of the customers require, and, and that's a changing industry in itself. A lot of the OEMs are now looking to these companies that can warehouse product for them short-term. You know, weeks, months, just short-term. It just helps them to have companies who can be that full-service provider. And it's opportunity.
So would you consider it like a, like a just-in-time facility? So you're shipping parts to the supply?
Can I, can I point to you had a warehousing mark?
Yes, please.
For a lot of our customers now, they don't want to have to just fill an order that goes on a truck. Especially in automotive, you could have fifty different items down there, okay? So by having a warehouse-based opportunity, they send a truck of items. They say they're doing door skins one day, okay? So they send us five or six loads of door skin. Then the next day, it could be trailing arms. And then it can be windshield. And it can be all the various parts that run there. So in, in a lot of people's current situation, say that Honda wants four racks of windshield and then they're gonna need this and they're gonna need that. It works out. They have to waste their time on their facility putting it all together. By the time they're at their labor cost, it is locked the room, all the other things. I mean, even Anchor Bay, all these people, they can ship it. We're gonna have a big enough warehouse and then we can store. We could store a hundred racks of windshield. We can store a hundred boxes of this. We can do that. And then we can pick it and pull it ourselves. We have six docks at the back of this building. That's what we currently do where we're at. Only problem is we store a lot of stuff on trailers, so we're pulling it in and out and in and out of the dock. You know, and I need these trailers on the road or setting up warehouses. I don't need them warehousing cars, but we could be setting in a warehouse. It'll make it much easier because then once I have my warehousing layout and it becomes computer-operated, I can sit there and get a pick ticket from any one of the customers. I can get them from anywhere in Texas on what's gonna go on and what they need. You know, obviously, they want their product brought in to order. So, you know, they know what cars are coming down the assembly line and what all the options and everything around them can be. So then at that point, they call us or they send us a pick ticket and we book for it. And the great thing about that is we get to charge for that. That brings in money. So people are sitting there wanting to say, well, fifteen trucks ain't gonna pay for that building. Well, you ain't gonna build a forty thousand square foot building for fifteen trucks.
Well, that's kind of the point of my question. I'm trying to understand the future of your business and whether that's trucking or warehousing? And, and, and how does that, how does that impact the...
I mean, when I come out here to be stagnant, I mean, you know, there's gonna be some growth, but I can't tell you. I mean, right now, I could, if I, I've had five new Volvo's on order for over a year. I can't even get them. My mom was having to go back and buy used trucks, which is like shooting yourself in the foot. But that's just the way economy is right now and that's the way it is. You know, there's people all over the country with their cars broke down, can't get a fix cause they can't get parts. So, you know, but to say here...
Yeah, it's a matter of efficiency and streamlining things. And with that, it also creates opportunity, you know? So all, all these factors work together to build a better company. You know, the warehousing component would be important to that.
See, that's, to me, that's all fighting good. That's wonderful. However, I know that a lot of these folks here are concerned about the traffic. And the roads, both. And is anybody gonna get killed? Are any of their kids gonna get involved in accidents because there's trucks that went there? Not everybody's gonna know that their trucks are churning. Because not everybody is on that road all the time.
And I guess to my point, I'm looking at the big picture. It's not only the trucks, but if you have this massive warehouse operation, now you need warehouse employees. So now you have that much, you have not only six office staff, but however many people it takes to run this warehouse, to move all of these parts in and out. I mean, truck drivers aren't doing it themselves. So there, that's that much more traffic in general, not just the trucks. But now you have that many more passenger vehicles coming in and out, traveling further down Springbourn because that entrance is different than the truck entrance.
Why would they go further down Springbourn?
He's just talking to the parking lot for...
Correct, yeah. I mean, your, your passenger vehicle parking lot is further down Springbourn. So if you expand your warehouse operation, then that requires employees.
So the employees of our company that live on Springbourn would have to use Springbourn. I totally understand that, yeah.
Well, I, I'm, the point I'm making is the traffic is bigger than just the trucks, in my opinion. That's all.
Yeah, there are, there are some cars.
You're talking about leasing office space, so even more. I mean, what, what kind of, what kind of people are gonna be leasing?
Probably if we lease anything would be get a couple of people coming in to broker a load. We weren't building our brokerage to be even bigger. We have a brokerage company, but it's run from overseas and we don't want it run from overseas. We want it run here. That's why we're putting in two stories of five thousand square foot office space, you know? So that's one of the reasons.
How many traders can that property hold?
And all brokerage freight is done, it's ninety percent over the computer and over the phone. You don't even see those, you know? Those are loads that are manufactured in California, go east coast and vice versa.
Okay, let's move on, folks.
I think it was from one fifty...
Can I ask you a quick question? What John and that lady were saying about the passenger vehicles, how many parking spaces do they have? Let me get through with the planner, sir. And we'll take one more question from you and then we gotta move on, okay? Any other questions from the planners?
Yeah, he just, he just answered. He'll hold a hundred, about a hundred and fifty trailers, is what he's saying.
Your proposed site plan there, how many passenger vehicle parking spaces are included there?
I think it was based on your ordinance of what, four or five per thousand square feet? So there might be forty or fifty car park spaces.
Okay. Other questions from the planners? Thank you.
I got one just to the basic demo out there in the audience. Mostly you just don't wanna build in period there, correct?
Correct.
And then above that, you just don't want the traffic that would come along with it per se, right?
I'll leave both correct.
I do, I do have one question that I can ask, which nobody had brought up. And you said it's car parts. What about hazardous materials? Transport those?
Hazardous?
Do you have, transport hazardous materials?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, cause you were just, you were just violated within the last twenty-four months from the Federal Order of Carrier Safety Act for a hazmat violation. So you do transport hazardous?
No, that was actually more than six percent.
Folks, just...
Harold just curious about...
I'm sorry, that was more than six percent.
I'm gonna have to look at you.
Sir, please. So your question is?
Do they transport hazardous materials?
Okay, thank you.
As well as all of yours?
Do you transport hazardous material?
No, we do not. Okay, a shipper put one piece more, they're allowed six percent of their freight can be hazardous. They put on one piece more, the officer wrote a ticket saying hazmat deal on there, but he didn't look at the original bill of laying and find out the whole deal on that. So that was a mock, next deal, one in twenty-four months, and that's only one in thirteen years.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the planners? Sue?
If the current, if somebody was coming in to put office space there, would they need to be in front of us since the master plan makes it office space? The master plan shows that as office space. Still need to come for rezoning, okay?
Until it's officially changed, correct?
It shows it as future office space.
Yeah, that's what I was just curious, if they would still have to do a zoning or is that always...
So, and so with that, so office space, how, how many, how many employees would an office employ that could be built there?
That would be definitely dependent upon the type of office you said came in.
What was their...
It could be a hospital. With a health number, yep.
So that's a lot of cars pulling out of office.
Yep, it could be.
What is office?
My, my concern is a little car is more of a tractor trailer pulling out as I travel that way every day also.
Okay. Anything else from the planners? Sir, I owe you one. So let her rip. All right. You know, this isn't a personal thing. We don't, me personally, I don't want anybody coming in, not greatly trucking or pond trucking, whatever. But since we do have a overpass right there and we all know, we got the signs, maybe icy, you know, approaching the bridge, this and that. As people are coming down and this slow tractor, trailers pulling out, that's not really a good combination, right? In the way?
We, we've discussed that with them.
I don't know what, if that shows up in the...
It was one of my real hangups. You know, and it, it is something that we have to take a hard look at with McComb County and also with St. Clair County. Now, these folks, believe me, have a lot of experience, a lot more than I have. And they, between all of us, are gonna come up with, if we get to that point, with that type of solution. We have to do that. That's what we do, okay? Kinda makes sense.
Yeah, I know one solution that we're a hundred percent. Well, okay, any other comments from the planners? You, you...
I know, I'm sorry.
That, that's okay, you know, I guess I owe you two. Go ahead.
I just wanna reiterate, I live on Springbourn. I built there because it was all agricultural. I moved away from the city to move into the country. And there was never any hint that there would be industrial on my street.
I, I hear you.
And thank you for that comment. Appreciate it. Any other comments from the planners? Okay, is there a motion to close, close the public hearing?
I'm making a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Jim. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Sue, there's a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, carry. All right. Well, planners, the next thing we have to do is come up with something this evening as far as what our next steps are going to be. And we have probably three different areas that we can look at. One is denying the application and we have to have reasons for that. Approve the conditions of approval and/or we postpone until we get more information on what we heard this evening. So what is your pleasure?
And Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, please.
One comment. The applicant made a beautiful presentation.
Yeah.
With, you know, a lot of great pictures and a great visual aid.
Yeah.
But that visual aid is not part of this residual rezoning request.
Correct.
I have absolutely no doubt that the applicant will hold up to their word. But this rezoning cannot be based on that visual aid, whether up or down. If you don't like to look at the building, then you put it aside. You're dealing with the land use and the conditions that they have offered.
Correct. Thanks, Chris. Steve, do you have any thought?
No, I would just can almost say the same thing. We're dealing with the land use issue today.
Yeah.
Land use issue of whether you felt that the property should rezon, contingent upon the conditions they have offered for providing a trucking operation. And the site plan review, including utilities, water, sewer, septic, whatever, including the conversation with the road commission and the McComb County Road Department on how to handle the additional traffic would come at site plan review time. Which would be a secondary step.
It's perfectly acceptable. And you guys have heard a lot of comments, it's a very impassioned president tonight. The commission members need time to digest what the presidents have said and the additional information by the applicant. It's absolutely acceptable to table this, especially since you've got a meeting in about two weeks.
If you postpone it, you, you don't have to put it in the public hearing again, do you?
No, the public hearing is already written down. But it will be done at a public meeting. So the public certainly has a right to come to the meeting and watch and comment.
And I almost wonder, Chris, not just two weeks or whatever that may be, if that's enough time?
That's completely up to you guys.
I, I, I'd be a little concerned that, at, at even for me, just to digest everything that we've heard this evening, what we need to do as far as research and, and to maybe understand a little bit more what the neighbors are saying and, and also what the petitioner is saying too. So...
So, I'm, I'm in that camp, Steve, where I, I think it might be worthwhile for us to postpone, but that is up to you. What is your pleasure?
I think we need to postpone it. I mean, I'm just pushing it off. Make a decision, lady can make a decision now. I already know what you're thinking. I don't understand the difference, really, between the office service and this is an industrial trucking company. So where that qualifies, I don't know. And that's future offices. It's a ad right now.
Right.
So.
You're looking at both things. You're looking at a, a piece of property that is owned agriculture. You have a property to the south that is own business. You have a property to the east that is more egg. It's not exactly your standard situation.
It's currently egg.
Currently egg.
Mr. Commissioner, who?
Drafted the list of conditions?
Those voluntary by the applicant, which is by law.
As the commission, you do not have a right to ask for conditions.
Gotcha.
You can let the applicant know what your concerns are, and they can offer a condition to help alleviate those concerns, but you cannot ask or require conditions.
Thank you.
No, it says in there, though, you need like 18 months. Why 18 months?
Is that something you want us to answer?
I don't think...
They can ask anything they want. And they have volunteered the information. In their minds, it's gonna take 18 months to make all this happen. Boy, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but is that basically true?
Well, we would hope it could happen quicker, but we understand we gotta go through process yet, and there are some open issues to mostly the utilities that have to be resolved. And, you know, our site plan isn't a complete site plan. It's just, this is what we'd like to do. And obviously, some things have been brought up by the residents, and, you know, those are things we need to address. And I'm sure you have issues too. The traffic is certainly one of the things, and we're open to, even though the report said we didn't need it, we're open to traffic controls there. You know, if you don't have a safe operation, it's no good for anyone. It's not good for the applicant, it's not good for the community. So we are open to that. But I also wanna stand behind that this was an engineering report done by someone who's doing work in the community right now. I mean, 26 mile impact study, so they're involved in way through to do that.
Do you have, continue or ask additional questions?
Yeah, and, and one thing I wanted to just, Paul, just wanted to bring up to you, and your group. You've heard the same thing we did this evening. There's a number of opportunities, there are a number of things that maybe need some more review. We can do one of two things, if you decide that you wanna postpone, that could be done, if you wanna move forward a little bit, that can be done. So I'm just asking that question, bring it up to you. We have, our next meeting's on the 20th, right? Uh, 20th of December, and ask on 2, on 2/2. Anyway, I just throw that out.
I guess if we were to move to postpone, we'd wanna know the issues that the board wants us to address, so we can come back and address that. You know, we, obviously, we'd like to make the state in the community and build this project. And we tried to deal with some of the things that we thought knew would be concerns, and, you know, I can just reiterate that our impact on traffic to the community, we will never be going north or east. We have no reason to. We will never be going down Springborn Road. You wanna write tickets or do whatever you want, they're, you know, they're open to that. There's no reason for that. You know, our trips on the road are about a mile, mile and a half from I-94. And we're trying to do everything we can to minimize that, but, you know.
Well, and I hear what you're saying, and the thing that, that we keep jumping back on, at least I do, is there's a safety factor out there.
And we are open to address any of those concerns or recommendations.
I mean, those are things we have to do. With, is getting McComb County involved with us and, and you.
And that will take time.
You know, there's a piece of property for sale that's just north of Ponzo, you go straight, straight across there, right? You could always come on the east side and come out farther up...
You mean just south of Ponzo?
South.
At the 60. Yeah, we, we looked at that property, and it doesn't, it's not wide enough to allow for us to put a structure, you know, that's wide enough to put truck wells. You know, you need something...
I'm just talking about taking your, you know, you have like that little strip or, you know...
In addition to your property?
Just go up there and come out another 200, 300 yards farther down the road.
Speaking of property... Not following what you're...
In addition to your property?
In addition to your property, that property that...
You're owning it. Your trucks would go out further down.
I'm not sure if we could link to that. I think there's wetlands on the east side of the property. Those are things we consider.
Does the company already own the property that is in question?
Yeah.
Is it developer or with the company?
The company, yes.
Which company?
Great Lakes Trucking, Michigan.
When, when was that need transferred? Because it says...
So, sir, please go through the chairman.
I apologize.
Okay. Petitioners, we're at that, I'm sorry, planners, we're at that point, and my question still stands on, what do you think as far as moving forward? I'd like to tell the 20th. I'm sorry, I'd like to tell the 20th, personal, that's a personal thing. 20th of December, is it? It's a lot of stuff. I hear both sides here. But, throwing that in your court.
Either vote on it or postpone it, or, you know, we want to do. For the 20th.
Postpone it.
Postpone it.
Make a motion to the senator.
I mean...
Don't change anybody's mind.
I don't know that we're gonna change any minds right now at this point in time. Seem to be a little bit of tension in this room. I mean, we would move to postpone it and answer anything you give back to us with.
Well, you heard the comments, Paul, as we did, you know, and you...
I mean, part of them are people just don't want anything there.
Yeah, well, they live in the area, and they're... Believe me, I understand that one.
Yeah.
I really do. And when I come up county line, and you and I have had this discussion at 6:30 in the morning, you know, and I'm trying to visualize a 75-foot truck, and Harold, you and I have had a little conversation on that too. And you only have maybe five or six or eight seconds to make a decision when you come over 94.
It's 11 seconds.
That's one car, though.
You gotta set, you'll have to buy...
I understand. Okay. So those are, those are things that, that's, you can tell. They're still questioning in probably even planners' minds. And, and the folks who live there, you know, they're, they're asking questions. What are you, what are you gonna really do? And I'm not so sure we answered that question.
Well, I know we haven't answered that question because we haven't got into that part yet. That's come out of this meeting, then maybe that's something you're recommending, is that we have some kind of traffic control. We're open to that discussion.
And to meet with McComb County.
Oh, for sure.
And understand their ramifications of what that may mean.
Right. I think that would involve some of their involvement with the commission too, besides us. I mean, you're, you're gonna want the answers from them too.
And we roll in St. Clair County along with that.
Right.
So we have, we have a little, little different situation here than normal.
Well, no doubt, we talked about that ongoing, yes.
Right. And I think you gotta make clear that for the people of Casco, we want, you know, we're trying to control where we want the traffic to be. We still want Casco to be rural, but I don't know if you're gonna stop. I mean, the other side of the road is, is lucky, and you can see they haven't stopped anything.
There's a, there's a trucking company on the other side. What's that first road behind it?
Beethy?
County Line Road.
Yeah, they're, they're...
You ever seen any, their trucks on your dirt roads out there?
They are on dirt roads, actually.
Well, but I mean, do they come down to Springborn and make a ride? No, because they can't, because they're too long to make that ride.
Yeah, right, that's, that's another thing. They couldn't even navigate down that road.
So, Paul, what's, what do you think, your folks? What do you, where are you coming from?
Well, obviously, we'd love to be in the community here and develop that site. We're open to postponing and getting answers if that's what's required from the road commissions, and further input on whether any traffic control is required there, or if it enhances it, sure.
Planners?
We paid for a traffic study, and if you guys think...
If I'm allowed to go home?
Please.
If you're gonna postpone, or they can get work with the McComb County Department of Roads for traffic, we're not gonna get an answer two weeks.
Definitely not by the 20th.
No.
You're right.
And maybe not even in January because of the outbreak.
Well, it's unlikely then, I mean...
What's your pleasure?
Are you voting right now?
You making a motion? Anybody wanna raise their hand up?
Well, I'm gonna go. Why would I have to do that?
It's on your mind, get it off your system.
Okay. I'm gonna make a motion to postpone until we get a traffic control report. And meeting with McComb County, and getting all that down. And postpone till when? January, maybe February?
I concur with Steve, it probably won't happen that quickly. It's pretty difficult to bring those parties together. This could get postponed into March or April. It's probably more realistic.
Is it possible to also consult with the McComb County and St. Clair County Sheriff's Department?
Who?
Well, the road, not only the road commission, but the sheriff's department. I mean, they're the ones that, that deal with firsthand the accidents and the traffic in, on the road. And at least, I think their input's important.
Very good, guys. There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion, a second to postpone the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Thank you, folks. Thank you all for coming to that. I know this is not easy. Some of you are still smiling, that's okay.
Will you be notified of the meeting? It's gonna be very tight. Bring it around. Will you be notified of the meeting? When, when it's, when?
You wanna notify the meeting?
Well, I wanna know what we need. You know, if we guys take...
I did? I want, I, I... What I feel, I'm not a fucker. I don't give a goddamn shit about the business. I bought a huge building in my backyard.
When it comes to small things?
No, I don't... I never bought this property, I've never built, never! They can't do any of this, that, that, that. It's all, it's all...
You can build that thing for $3 million, you're hired. So with that, Paul, you've got the seven and the, you also got the concrete slabs, or, you know, dolly pads, and you have, you know, the... So. And, uh, also the warehouse and all that, office spaces, but... The class.
Thanks, Paul. Yeah, thanks. Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas, everyone. Thanks, Harold. Thank you. Appreciate it.
So they're ready, they broke down, and they're ready to come down. You guys are ready to come down?
Have a good Christmas. Thanks, folks. Oh, we gotta go rest for ages. Come on, thanks, guys. Everybody go walk out these days. Push it to our end. Pretty cool, wow. Shouldn't have asked for the German for God's sake. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, folks, we're going to finish this meeting even if the director wants to go home. So, uh, we're gonna go to the next items, uh...
Nice talking, all.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, you guys. All right. Be safe, okay, be back. All right.
Take travel, going back home.
Planners, report, is there anything, Steve, that we've got to prepare? Did we wanna talk about the, uh...
Um, next, this one. We have the public hearing for the red plan. Um, a copy is available on Casco's website for you guys to review. That's what's gonna be going on.
When does that, open here?
Open here on the 20th.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, the red plan.
You're not gonna be asked to take any action? You just receive comments for the motion? You will prefer to hide it?
Yeah, I don't know if I wanna relive watching that.
Huh?
I don't know if I'm gonna relive the watch.
Same period, same year.
Thanks, guys.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, any other, any other reports from the editors? Uh, Jared, anything we should be aware of?
Is he in there? Oh, you're rolling, I'm hoping you have a roll. You're never allowed to go.
Wait, don't wait. Okay.
All right, I believe we're ready for motion to adjourn.
I'll vote that one.
I'll second that.
Everybody wants to make motion.
You're wonderful people. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Close, amen.